All right, I want to call this school board study session to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historic lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as the first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial, and to whom we give thanks for allowing the passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. Today on our agenda, we have our board goals. President Shrocher?
Papo.
Cool, okay. So, to A, board goal: Research Personal Electronic Devices. Adopted board goal number one, the board will conduct comprehensive study of the appropriate use of cell phones during school hours. Now pass it to you.
Yes. Good evening, Board of Directors. Tonight, we are going to start your, doing some research to your board goals. And tonight, we're going to hear from our general counsel, and he's going to give us a policy over here. What's currently in what in our policies that would address the use of cell phones in our schools? Right? And then, tonight, we have three guests, three guests from the field. Lisa Gibbs, Principal at Edna Travis Elementary, Amy Latimer, Principal at Baker Middle School, and Mr. David McCollgan, Principal at Mount Tahoma High School. And they have all been doing this in the field, and they're going to share their experience of what they have going on at their individual skills, and then, you know, a little bit of what's working, and what are some potential challenges that they face in that space. And then, we're going to, I have some other supporting documents that I'll give you a high-level overview that have been shared with us by Director Enrique Leon, and then have a little bit of time for questions. But this is just the first step in the process, right? We're not making any decisions tonight, but really trying to get you to think about what is the additional information that you'd like to collect over the year to make some informed decisions. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Malik.
Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome, Board. Welcome our guests. So, like Superintendent Garcia said, we're taking a look at the current policy landscape as it stands right now. What do our policies and regs say on this issue? So, we've identified three policy and regulation combos, which are the most relevant ones for us to take a look at that have an impact on this discussion. So, the first is Policy and Regulation 2022. And what we've done is we've got a kind of a high-level overview of what each of these policies say. And then later in the presentation, you'll see some really specific language of why these policies are so important to the conversation. So, Policy and Regulation 2022, this is where our electronic resources and internet safety, language and protocols live. It does two important things for the purpose of this discussion, is it authorizes the superintendent to adopt guidelines for the use of electronic resources. You'll notice that's written very broadly. The reason is that 2022 gives the superintendent and the designees the ability to regulate both the one-to-one devices we give students and the electronic resources that they use through that avenue. It also gives us the authority to regulate personal electronic devices of students. It basically is the one that says, you know, schools, you know, you're authorized to adopt these rules governing both. In fact, if you were here during COVID, shortly after COVID, this is where our one-to-one device language lives, is in Policy 2022. And then it expands out to talk about personal devices in the same policy and regulation. The second one we should look at is Policy and Regulation 6973. This is in our management section of the board policies, and this is Acceptable Use of Digital Resources. The reason this one's really important to our conversation is it does two important things. It, it's the policy and regulation that allows students access to our district network. So, if you've been in schools and you've heard students say, "At this part of the building is hard to get a cellphone tower reception." "At this part of the building is hard to get a cellphone tower reception, so I log on the guest Wi-Fi." This is what allows that logging on to occur. Students have to get on that, but agree to certain use restrictions. So, example that we have from the policy is content filtering. So, a student is allowed to get on the guest Wi-Fi per this policy, subject to agreeing to the content restriction. And then the second bullet is subject to agreeing that there's no expectation of privacy in that electronic resource use. So, if a student is on our guest Wi-Fi, and they, you know, if a student makes a report or a complaint that they violated a policy or regulation, maybe it's HIV or harassment, the district has the authority per this policy to go in and look at that internet usage as part of the investigation. We don't willy-nilly do that, but if we get a, if we get a report, this tells families and students, whoever uses guest Wi-Fi, you use it under the restrictions and you use it with no expectation of privacy. The last one we'll look at tonight, and again, we'll look at the specifics in a few minutes here, is the combination 3240, 3241. This is where our twin student conduct, student discipline policies live. So, 3240 establishes a school's authority to restrict certain items and restrict certain behaviors. 3241 allows us to impose disciplinary responses to violations of 3240. So, you'll see some of that language shortly, but we treat those 3240 and 3241 together, because one says we have the right to control what students are doing to some degree, and the other says this is the acceptable disciplinary responses if there's a violation over here. So, we typically look at those together. All right, so let's look at some specifics. So, from Policy and Regulation 2022, 2022, the part that's important, we've highlighted here for you. So, this is the part that you notice we have some school principals here to talk about their individual schools. This is where school principals have the individual ability to decide what acceptable use of student personal devices looks like at their school. So, one school can come up with a set of rules, another school can come up with another set of rules, another school can come up with another set of rules. We've vested the authority to make those decisions in the schools and their leadership. So, schools have the final authority in deciding when and how students may use personal electronic devices on school grounds during the school day. You notice it doesn't say cell phones, because elsewhere in the policy, it's clear this relates also to if a student were to bring a personal laptop. The rules about how they use that in school, this covers that. If they had a, you know, there's a watch they have nowadays, that's internet, it's smart watch, internet connectable device watch, it's written broadly enough to encompass that. So, and there was one more piece that's important here, which is the next piece, which this gets at a point we've discussed before, which is what about where there's a documented accommodation need, maybe perhaps based on a disability, or based on an IEP, or based on a 504. This captures in some of that language. It says, "Students don't have an absolute right to possess or use their personal devices while at our schools. However, we realize there's a carve-out for articulated needs, including assistive technology for students that have those in their IEP or 504." So, these are things like, we have students with dragon readers that reads the text, we have communication devices, we have eye-gaze devices, different kinds of personal devices that have an exception in 2022. Okay, so looking at 6973, this is some specific language from here. This is probably the most relevant of the three regulations, policy, regulation combos, because this one actually goes into some of the rules that exist now. So, the first is here, we have personal digital devices such as laptops, computers, and it does include smartphones. This is where we allow them to connect to the district network. This is the same regulation and policy combo that says, "If you do use your personal device to get on our district network, that's okay. However, you have to abide by the rules." So, don't expect any privacy when you're using it, and then you have to agree to all the conditions of use, which including things like we've talked about, internet filtering, content filtering. If the Wi-Fi, some students will complain, "Hey, the Wi-Fi is not so good." It's like, "We offer it on a, you know, courtesy basis." It is as it is. We don't have to do perfect coverage throughout every building. We're offering it for what it is. It says in the policy. So, taking a close look at the last one, this is the last one we'll take a look at this evening before any brief questions folk might have. This is 3240. So, again, this is a student conduct, student discipline space. And this is, it's written in there to 3240, some of the rules about student use of personal electronic devices. We want to contrast this, though, from 2022. 2022 says that individual schools can decide what the acceptable use in their buildings are. 3240 says now common across all schools, every school in the district. If a student is possessing or using their cellphone to disrupt the educational process, the district is allowed to come in with a disciplinary response if, you know, the students aren't compliant. So, if you hear schools that, you know, if the student gets it taken away, maybe it's returned to the student at the end of the day, or maybe it's returned to a parent or guardian at the end of the day. Maybe there's a, you know, detention or some disciplinary process for not abiding by the rules. That lives in 3240. So, just to summarize, 2022 gives us the authority to do the restrictions. 6973 talks about district resources if you're using our guest network. And then 3240 and 3241 are saying, "What if students don't do what you expect them to do? Where do those disciplinary responses live?" That's 3240 and 41. So, that's a basic landscape of where we are right now. Schools can make their own decisions. However, some of the responses are prescribed if students are being disruptive with their, with their devices.
So, in the context of that, we have, based on district policy, we have created conditions for schools to allow students to use their cell phones within parameters of local context. So, we have invited three principals to come to share their experience with you tonight. I want to be very clear, one is not better than the other. There is no right or wrong in this conversation. It's just about sharing with you and the public about context. So, less is not better, or more is not better. And it's, it's about, here's where we are developmentally. And we wanted to give you an elementary version of this. This doesn't mean that all elementary schools are like this, or all middle schools are like this, or all high schools are like this. It is just three examples, one from each different level, that shows you how the policy is being applied at a local context. So, if it's all right with you, I'd like to give you a little example of how it's being applied and some of the lessons learned there before we get into questions. Okay? So, Lisa, would you like to get us kicked off?
Sure.
Travis.
By the way, I guess.
Travis, put Travis.
Edna Travis, please. Mark.
Yeah, I'm getting it set up.
Okay.
I don't know. Yep, just one second.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay. Thank you for having, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right.
And you can move that closer to you, whatever's the most comfortable for you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this evening. It's a real privilege for me to share with you just our experiences at Travis with students and cell phones. The biggest challenge that we have faced in the last, I guess, two-plus-point-three months years is students using their cell phones during recess to videotape other students, and then posting those videos on their TikTok, or whatever, or sharing them with other, other students. And the journey that has taken us to where we are today has really come from communication, collaboration, and consistency, and bringing families on board to partner and to get their support. My first year, I had, this graph shows cellphone incidents in regards to videos from my first, my first two years as a principal, and then this year. My first year, and the graph only goes to about this time this year, so like the first six weeks of school, because I want the data to be the same. So, in my first year, the first six weeks, we had four incidents of students on the playground videotaping other students. Sometimes it was they were inciting a student to fight. Sometimes it was, "I'm going to take a picture of this student who I have a crush on and try to like post that somewhere." And as a principal, I was like, "Okay, they're not supposed to be doing that. I'm going to take their phone, have their parent come pick it up. If it happens again, then there's a different discipline." And nobody really pushed back on that. And I kind of, I didn't really know what I was doing, because it was my first year. So, I felt lucky, I was lucky, knowing, knowing what I know now, I was lucky that parents just accepted the discipline that I was giving. Last year, at this time, we had five incidents. And I was just kind of using the same, I guess, discipline, take the phone, have the parent come. And I had one parent say to me, "Why is that?" And I got a little nervous, and I was like, "Well, not a great thing to do. And then also, it's our school board policy." And he was like, "Oh, why didn't you just say so? Like, what's the policy?" And so, that led me to look at how I was communicating, which was really when there was an incident, but there wasn't any preventive pieces. And it led me to think about, what do families really need? And so, I was able to have this particular parent and two other parents come for a small listening session about, "Oh, if you would just put in your newsletter the policy so that families could see what the reasoning is behind it, I think that would be better." So, that's what I started doing. And I do that every newsletter. It's also in our morning announcements. And this year, I think because of that consistency, as of right now, we have not had any incidents of cell phones in videotaping on our, at recess. And I really believe that's because I have the parent's support from home, but that's because of the collaboration I did with that small handful of parents, and then just being willing to have that communication two ways.
Do you want to wait for questions till the end, or did you?
No, you can go ahead. Yeah.
Question? Okay. So, so your energy and effort in this data is around the videotaping during, have you had any incidents of kids using their cell phones during class and being disruptive at all?
Not really.
Or earphones or earbuds?
No, not really. Not at Travis. It's really been the videotaping, and I guess, and that's not really happening in class. It does happen on the buses, so we partner with transportation to try to limit that. Transportation usually does the discipline around that. But again, I think it's having parents understand the policy and then just collaborating with them. But no, as far as in the classrooms or at lunch and things like that, we haven't had any issue with that. Can I add one more thing?
Please.
I would say, challenge going forward, or our next step would be, I understand that families want their children to have cell phones because it's a, for them, for safety, right, for peace of mind. And then, the piece that we've run into is students bringing their cell phones, but not wanting to leave them in their backpacks, because maybe someone will get into their backpack and take it. And then, kind of the uncomfortableness of where do we store them otherwise? And a teacher saying, "Well, I'm happy to put it in my desk, but what if someone takes it from my desk? Am I, am I liable for that?" So, I'm kind of in this gray area now, where if you choose to send it, then that's kind of on you as the parent, because we can't really, I can't, I can't guarantee that that cellphone is, as much as I try, that that's going to come home with the child. And so, we haven't really had too many issues with that, but it is something I think about, because I feel like I would be responsible if a parent had a concern about where's their kid's phone.
Thank you, Lisa. Mark, can you help us bring up Baker next? Thank you.
Bless you. Thank you for having me. This is something I'm very passionate and excited to talk about. I feel this is something that makes Baker very unique, and something that we have found has created something very special in the culture at Baker. So, I'm really excited to be able to share this with you. Baker went 100% cellphone-free last year. This is our cellphone policy. Cellphone-free means from the time you enter our door until the time you leave. That includes hallways, lunchtime, sporting events, any time you're in the school building. We started this the fall of last year, and the why for doing this is, one, it was a response to student mental health and some social development that we were seeing, that I felt a moral obligation to learn more about and to address. It also addressed the decline in academic engagement that we were seeing at the school, and some data that we were collecting through our PLC cycles on this. Also, in response to current research, I did some reading, some studying myself before I made some of these decisions. And then, safety. Safety was a huge concern. Some of the things that Lisa was talking about, we saw also, smiling at Malik, he knows some things that had happened at our school, things that were being captured on videos that was causing harm to the community that I felt we needed to address. So, we took the bold step last year. How did we do this? We started with really clear and transparent communication with families, staff, and students. This started in July of last summer. I started with robo-calls home with families, letting them know what was happening. I was sharing some of the research with them. I welcomed them into the building to get some of this research if they wanted it, or to come have conversations. I didn't do it in all one dump. It happened over multiple calls over the summer and emails over the summer. We had grade-level meetings with our students where we shared the why, because that's always important to students, that they know why we're doing it, and how we were doing it, and got them on board. And then, we also communicated with staff in meetings about the importance of consistency. If you're that one teacher that's going to allow kids to have phones in your class, this is going to be problematic. And then, we let them know how we would respond so that they wouldn't have, we didn't want teachers to be the ones that had to be in conflict with students when they were on their cell phones. So, for, we anticipated for that first year that administrators would be the ones that would go in and retrieve the cell phone so that it wouldn't create a conflict between teacher and student. And then, we created systems for this. Phones were often in the backpacks. We didn't want them in the outside pockets. We said you need to put them in the inside pockets. This also included earbuds, because, you know, you can just Bluetooth into it and all of that. And then, we also throughout all of last year, had listening sessions with families and students, always asking, "How's this going? What more should we know? Is this working?" Here are the results. We definitely increased student engagement. We found this in the new 5D evaluation tool, asked teachers to do some work around student engagement and collect data around that. So, we began tracking through that. Definitely improved social action. This is a video I'm going to show you in a second. If this works for it, it might not, I'm not sure. But this is going to be a surprising video of watching children be children. It gave students a new sense of freedom that they didn't even realize they didn't have. It completely eliminated cyber bowling on campus. Notice I said "on campus." We did have incidents that happened off-campus, and when families would come in and they would be showing us the social media stuff, we were able to say, "We would like to help, and we can do some restorative circles here, but let's be clear, this, this did not happen at school." And so, we could address it differently, knowing that it wasn't happening at school. And reduced fights on campus by a lot, 35, from 35 to 55% less over a two-year span of fights, because nobody's there to video them, and so it decreased immensely. And teacher, huge appreciation from the teachers, and a reduction in referrals for disruption in class with cell phones. And I, can I hit the, will this? So, this is, is there sound? And when we asked kids about this, their exact response was, "Nobody was filming us, so we could just do it." And this happens regularly at Baker on rainy days. We pull out the big Bluetooth speaker, and kids just start dancing. And to me, I mean, I still get chills when I see it happening, because they're kids being kids, because nobody is filming them, and they're laughing, and they're smiling, and they're interacting. And we hadn't been seeing that in a while. And so, that brought a lot of joy to us. We also in our student listening sessions, asked students directly about this. Yes, they noticed their addictions. They talked a lot about this, but these statements particularly popped out as things that we heard more than once when we did student listening sessions. "I feel safer. I feel like I can be my true self. I didn't think I would like it, but I'm a better student because of it." And there is way less drama, which, if you've spent any time at middle schools, you know, that's wonderful to hear. The last thing I wanted to share, because in my research, as I was looking at doing this, there's always the concern of discipline and that student, 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 certain students might be targeted heavier for discipline. We did not have much discipline around the cell phones. We weren't giving lunch detentions. We were calling home. We were maybe holding on to it. But our discipline data shows that we don't really have that gap for our students, especially for our students of color. That's something that we went into this thinking very carefully of, that we didn't want to target, you know, make this, make our discipline, our exclusionary discipline and other discipline rise over that. So, that was something that we really took to heart as we went in with this. And lastly, these were some of the big influencers in how I came to this decision, reading The Anxious Generation, but also The Brave New Worlds, thinking about AI, and how, why kids do need technology, and what the right kind of technology is. There was a lot of really good arguments for that. And then, this was another article that I read. I put it in here. If any of you haven't read these things, you may have already read them. But they were kind of some foundational pieces that helped me in understanding the situation better.
Thank you, Amy.
I'm just wondering, so, middle school. Now, we first started that eventry, and I wouldn't expect a whole lot there, but middle school is exactly kind of right for that. And so, this year, have you noticed that the kids are used to it, and it's been just a normal transition? And what are the parents saying?
When we started this, there were four parents who were against it. And so, I said, "Okay, I won't ask your, I won't ask your, I won't ask your child to put their cellphone away." They explained what they were against it. They thought it was a safety thing. And I said, "But may I call you if the cellphone becomes a problem in class?" And they said, "Absolutely." Three of the four students had the cellphone problem in class. The parents took the cellphone from them themselves, and then they were like, "We're on board." And the others, so that was, I only had push, I was expecting a bigger mountain to climb on that. There were only four parents out of anybody.
And, and I guess my other question is, in talking to other middle school principals, you know, have others started to take on the same approach or not?
I'm very careful about how I talk about this. I've been given an invitation to talk about something I'm really passionate about, but sometimes it comes across that you might know, "You should do what I do," and I'm very careful about that, because my colleagues do wonderful things. And I have shared how wonderful this has been. I, I do want to share today, I thought about this when I was coming. I was doing the rounds after school. We walked the perimeter of the school, and this group of eighth-grade kids were coming towards me, and I kept hearing this, "The ants come marching two by two, hurrah, hurrah." And I'm like, "What are they singing?" And they kept getting louder and louder. And they were dancing arm-in-arm, singing childhood songs. And then, they got up to me, and I danced a little bit with them. And there is way less drama, which, if you've spent any time at middle schools, you know that's wonderful to hear. The last thing I wanted to share, because in my research, as I was looking at doing this, there's always the concern of discipline and that students... Certain students might be targeted heavier for discipline. We did not have much discipline around the cellphones. We weren't giving lunch detentions. We were calling home. We were maybe holding on to it. But our discipline data shows that we don't really have that gap for our students, especially for our students of color. That's something that we went into this thinking very carefully of, that we didn't want to target, you know, make this, make our discipline, our exclusionary discipline and other discipline rise over that. So that was something that we really took to heart as we went in with this. And lastly, these were some of the big influencers in how I came to this decision, reading The Anxious Generation, but also The Brave New Worlds, thinking about AI and how, why kids do need technology and what the right kind of technology is. There was a lot of really good arguments for that. And then this was another article that I read. I put it in here. If any of you haven't read these things, you may have already read them. But they were kind of some foundational pieces that helped me in understanding the situation better.
Thank you, Amy.
I'm just wondering, so middle school. Now, we first started that eventry and I wouldn't expect a whole lot there, but middle school is exactly kind of right for that. And so this year, have you noticed that the kids are used to it and it's been just a normal transition? And what are the parents saying?
When we started this, there were four parents who were against it. And so I said, "Okay, I won't ask your... I won't ask your... I won't ask your child to put their cellphone away." They explained what they were against it. They thought it was a safety thing. And I said, "But may I call you if the cellphone becomes a problem in class?" And they said, "Absolutely." Three of the four students had the cellphone problem in class. The parents took the cellphone from them themselves, and then they were like, "We're on board." And the others... So that was... I only had push... I was expecting a bigger mountain to climb on that. There were only four parents out of anybody.
And I guess my other question is, in talking to other middle school principals, you know, have others started to take on the same approach or not?
I'm very careful about how I talk about this. I've been given an invitation to talk about something I'm really passionate about, but sometimes it comes across that you might know, "You should do what I do," and I'm very careful about that, because my colleagues do wonderful things. And I have shared how wonderful this has been. I do want to share today, I thought about this when I was coming. I was doing the rounds after school. We walked the perimeter of the school and this group of eighth-grade kids were coming towards me and I kept hearing this, "The ants come marching two by two, hurrah, hurrah." And I'm like, "What are they singing?" And they kept getting louder and louder. And they were dancing arm-in-arm, singing childhood songs. And then they got up to me and I danced a little bit with them. And I'm like, "What else are you guys going to sing?" And I was like... And they were just kids. And what dawned on me was, these were eighth graders. School was out. They were not on campus. And there was not a cellphone in any of their hands, anywhere. And I thought, "Ooh, this is having an impact." Like that they're interacting in ways we used to interact, that maybe we have stolen from them a little bit. And it just reminded me again of why we do this work. And so this year, it's been so easy.
Great. Thank you.
Without a question, just a comment. I really appreciate your communication plan, how you started in the summer before school even kicked off. The robo calls, I think is really helpful. And then the grade level assemblies. I've come to a few of those and I love seeing like a seventh-grade assembly. It's only them. They're like, "Yeah, we know everything." And the teachers are like, "Okay, that's great. Anyways, here's what we're here to talk about." And so I think it's really helpful to have those, like that deep intervention of communication. I think for myself, a lot of the pushback that we hear, it's the one-offs. It's those four, it's those five. But then also lived experience, right? And so for myself, I just really appreciate the intentionality behind the communication. I think that's kind of where, for myself, even as a board member and then as a foster parent, I kind of struggle when I'm not being like heavily communicated, "This is what we're going to do with your child, with your children, with your nephew, whatever's going on." And so I think starting early and then the consistency, kind of like what you were talking about too. So I'm seeing like those parallels between what you're both doing, is just consistent communication. And David, I hear a lot from you, so I know. So, you know, but I'm just like, I'm really grateful for that intentionality. I think that really gets people on board to what the plan is going to be. And I see the impact, so that's really awesome.
So with that, Mr. President, can we transition? Mark, can you help us get to the T-Birds in Mountahoma? Please?
All right. Thanks for the opportunity to share tonight. A lot of the same things you heard from my colleagues, you'll hear from me. We started back in '24, '25, sending surveys to families in the summer of '24. We sent surveys to families, to students and to staff and gathered feedback on what, how they would feel about a new cellphone policy. Like Amy experienced, our, the only pushback from our families was, "You can have a policy. We agree they don't belong in schools or in classrooms. Please don't take them. Don't confiscate." And we provided research all along the way of why we're making these decisions, a lot of the research that Amy shared as well. And so we went into '24, '25 with one plan for dealing with cellphones that included not confiscating at any level. And now we've evolved to where we're at in '25, '26. We did surveys halfway through '24, '25, made some tweaks. And then we did a survey again in the summer of '25, made a few more tweaks. So here's where we're at. Intervention one, basically is how it runs in every class period. Every teacher starts with, "Please put your personal devices away." If that's not something that happens, then we have a one-on-one between the teacher and the student. We do assigned detention for that. And then if it happens again in that same class period, we do pull the student down. And where I think we've evolved and where we've really gotten buy-in from parents is, or families, is that we will call home and give the families the option of a few, a few different options, one being, "Or we can confiscate the phone for the day and return it at the end." 100% of families say confiscate the phone. So not nearly the battle we thought it was going to be in '24, '25. We've also added a cellphone plan as a further intervention for students who chronically violate and they turn it in at the beginning of the day, pick it up at the end of the day. We have a locked cabinet in the office that does this. Right now, we're only looking at about 10 students that are doing that. So most students, it's away, it's in the bag. And we've expanded to personal devices, so earbuds to any personal device. Some of the challenges that we've seen so far, the volume at the detention level is pretty high right now. And so we're tweaking that a little bit. We may just go straight to giving the families the option of confiscation because of the buy-in that we've had from families. And then some of the, you know, the implementation with fidelity across our system, right? We're not where Baker is at with total buy-in from staff, but we're working, we're getting there. And then some successes, the family partnership. Families are on board with this plan. We send newsletters home every weekend, reminding families of this. The communication is consistent. So we really have good family partnership with our, with our implementation. We have lowered usage rates anecdotally, like you saw from Amy, better engagement in classrooms, better engagement with peers. Overall, pretty positive. If I could share exclusionary data, it's also the same. We've trended down, I believe, three years in a row now. We don't see cellphones out for fights. We see less fights because they're not interacting on social media and stirring things up to go meet somewhere also, right? So overall, pretty positive.
Quick question, David. I might have missed it when you started, but on here, I don't see exactly what is the policy. Is it no cellphones, bell-to-bell, or...?
We are no cellphones, just in classrooms right now.
Just in classrooms.
So hallways and lunchtime, it's accessible.
I have a lot of knowledge about South Tacoma. My whole family is over there, so a lot of information. I know in the past, some of your feeder middle schools had really difficult fight cultures. And are you seeing an impact with your freshman and sophomore classes more so than your junior and senior classes, just based on that culture where they were coming from before these plans were implemented?
I would say this year, kids came in not expecting to have their cellphones, right? I think from the feeder middle schools, that was something that was already in them when they arrived. So speaking to fight culture, I don't know, it's, you know, fights are down at Mount Oklahoma?
Yeah.
Generally. And this has been in play now for us for two years. And so it, I would say we had a number of fights to start last year in September and October, and it's just gone down since.
Yeah. I figured. I know last year's freshman class, those are the middle schools I was hitting every other month I was at, a lot of them, before they fed into your school. And so I recognize that those students might have had a bit of a transition. But right now, you feeling like your sophomore class is really kind of blending in, they're understanding the culture better?
Yeah. And I think, you know, anecdotally, one piece that I've really noticed is, it used to be pretty common for phones to come out when fights were happening. And even with phones being accessible at lunch and in passing time, phones aren't out if we have a fight. So it's really easy to get in there and break it up.
That's good.
So also, and this was shared with Dr. Leon, and I want to highlight some... We also have some supporting documents for you attached to the agenda. And just want to highlight them a little bit. So the first one that's attached to the agenda, it's called Phones Free Schools. It's a research PDF. And really what that is, is it's just a great synopsis of some of the benefits of the policy. It's a one-pager of what the benefits of having a policy. And I'm not going to read them all in that space, but it gives you a little bit of glimpse for those that are home, what that should look like or some potential opportunities. The second one is talked about is Low Tech Classrooms. This one is, for those that read it, it has some contradictions, right, to technology and screen time. So I appreciate Amy pointing out that there's still a role in technology. So our goal here, we're talking about is cellphones use in there. We're not talking about technology broadly in schools. We're talking about the use of cellphones and their appropriateness in there. And so I want to make sure that we frame that. This specifically, the one talks about more of the impacts of screen time in that space. Not to say that there's not valuable tools in there, but as folks at home are reading that, the board is not talking about one-to-one devices. The board is talking about specifically about cellphones. And then the final one is really, it's called Phone Free Schools. It's more of a broader synopsis of a variety of research in there. It has a number of hyperlinks in there and it has also supporting, what do they call it? Starts with, you research, you're in a doctoral program, it starts with an A, they're short synopsis.
Abstracts.
Abstracts, thank you. I knew I would get it somewhere out there, right? A number of abstracts, so you can just read the abstracts in there. But in that space, thank you both for helping me out there. It also has a hyperlink inside of there that takes you to what policies they show for school districts across the nation. And you'll see, when you click in there, there are very few in Washington State. And I'm not sure if it was published by a certain company, because the company also links which, where they are connected to. So it might be just limited based on that. But you can see that there are some in Spokane and you can click into what their policies are. And you can see, very similar to what we have, they don't also, they may have it at different levels. It looks differently in that space. So one of the things that I want to highlight is, one is, it's Principal's Month here in that space. And I'm very proud and honored to serve with our principals and I'm so grateful that you folks are here. The key to all this, in my opinion, is when folks make meaning of it. Folks have to make meaning of it, right? And you hear that there are three examples of people making meaning of what works in this space. It has to contextualize. Travis has approximately 300 students. Baker has approximately 650-ish students. Mount T tips close to 1,500 students. That adds complexities. That adds complexities each time you do that. Developmental ages add complexities to each time you do that in that space. And so I just want to thank you all three for coming tonight. I want to thank you for what you do and your colleagues do for each of our kids. You mean the world to us. You truly are superheroes. I know tonight is one more thing. I appreciate you bringing your passion. I appreciate you bringing the intent of the school district policy to try to keep kids safe. Are there other questions for them? Because I want to make sure that they are, time is honored. It's one more night out for them. I'm going to kick them out and tell them to go home or go supervise an event. They probably have that too. Yeah. Or go back to work.
Go back. I just want to say thank you, because I know Principal's Month is like just a thing, but every day, every single day, all year round, you guys are working for our kids and it is not lost on us and it is, and we appreciate you deeply on behalf of my colleagues. I know they feel the same way. And I really appreciate this. This is super helpful to us. We're kind of trying to grapple at a district-wide level how to approach this. And Josh was explaining how, you know, he'd been working with the principals and everybody was doing their own thing and that sounded like bedlam, right? You know?
I love it.
And, but only because, you know, as we're talking about feeder schools, you know, if kids get used to something and then they go to the middle school and it's something completely different, they go to high school, it's something completely different. I don't know, I just, it makes more sense when I'm hearing you talk and I appreciate you coming and just hope that if we have questions down the line, we can reach out to you and, you know, just sort of check in, "How's it going? You know, we're four months in now, we're five months in and things still the same." And just because we want to, we want to make the best decisions if we're going to make a policy, we want to do it that's not going to undo the wonderful work that you guys have been doing, but capitalize on it. So thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, I just, I greatly appreciate perspective, right? I mean, I think policy doesn't save the day alone, it's the practice. So hearing you guys' individual perspectives on how it's working in your spaces is important, especially for us to move anything whenever we get to that point. So just know that we'll be coming back to you, hopefully not in Principal's Month again to keep you late. But definitely hold you guys in high regard, high regard and appreciate the effort you all put into presenting this data to us this evening.
Thanks for being leaders.
For sure.
So with that, I think you are dismissed.
You don't got to go back to work for real unless you absolutely have to.
With that, we are transitioning to talk about our levy overviews. And we have some honored and esteemed guests that you well know.
Sorry, that's me, that's me, that's me.
What are you doing?
Good night, guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Chad, your name is there. You can, you can move it though.
No one puts Chad in the corner.
That's right. Yeah, you might want to move.
Yeah.
Mr. President, Board of Directors, tonight, we want to give you overview of ballot propositions number one and number two. Ballot proposition number one is Educational Programs: Operation Replacement Levy. And ballot proposition number two is K-12 Technology Improvements and Upgrades Technology Replacement Levy. We brought the first resolutions to you last week and we, at the business meeting, and we told the public we would have a more in-depth conversation tonight as the study session. And so it's really a kind of a three-pronged approach. Rosin is going to help us walk through the EPNO, which is the Educational Program and Operations. So oftentimes, Jill or Harris refer to the EPNO, Education Programs and Operations. You know how we love those acronyms. Tanisha is going to talk to us a lot about the facts throughout this next journey. I'll remind you, we can't advocate one way or the other, we can only deliver facts. And Mr. Chad Stiller is going to be our expert on facts in the K-12 Technology Improvement Upgrades. Oftentimes, we refer to that as the capital levy, which we always seem to forget the technology capital levy, which sometimes can be confusing to the public as well, because capital we often refer to as buildings. And to make this clear, there's a capital bond, which is what we use to build buildings. And this is our technology capital levy, which is proposition two. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rosin and she's going to help us take it away.
Well, I'm going to start out with the most fun piece, which is our assessed value history. So our current assessed value is right around $48.5 billion. Billion, that's with a B. Each year, the assessor, the county assessor, will look at assessed values of all the properties within our school district boundaries and make determination about what the value of those items are. And like your individual home, if you're a homeowner, will be defined as to what that value is. You get a little tax statement in the mail in February typically, and that says how much you're going to be paying in taxes based on the value of your individual property. That's true for businesses as well as residential properties. And so you see that our assessed value has continued to grow considerably over the last number of years. We started this chart in 2014, but it's only had a dip a couple of times during the fiscal crisis, which is displayed on this chart here. And then in 2023, we had a little bit of a decline as well. And it actually anticipated, is anticipated, excuse me, to continue to grow. We're right now projecting about a 4% growth over the next several years, each year over the next several years. And that will change from year to year, just depending on what the assessed value comes in at. But realistically, it's been coming in a lot closer to 9% year-over-year in the last few years. So while we're trying to be conservative about what those impacts may be, we also use this as our determination for when we say what the tax impact to an individual homeowner is going to be. And the reality is, we can't read the tea leaves. We're not exactly sure. Your guess on what's going to happen in home values is as good as ours. And so we're trying to be conservative and make sure that we're representing that there will be an impact and this is what that impact would be based on what we know at this point in time. So when we talk about the EPNO, Educational Programs and Operations Levy, I think it's also important to note that the state calls this an enrichment levy. Enrichment means that you're using it for activities beyond what the basic education program is allocated to you for. So we'll talk a little bit more on the next slide about the things that Tacoma does with that. We renewed this levy last in 2022. The collections began in 2023. They will expire at the end of 2026. And so we'll be going out for a proposition in 2026. The first year of collection on that would be 2027. So it'll hit the 26, 27 budget, assuming the voters approve it and you put it on the ballot. But that will be the first start date that we'll see. And there's two calculation methods that are utilized to determine what the levy amount will be. It's the lesser of either $2,500 per student or $1.50 per thousand of assessed value. And those numbers have been adjusted for inflation. So they'll, those numbers are actually considerably larger now, but those are the, that's the law and how it's defined. But we're eligible to receive the lesser of those two calculations. There have been a number of legislative bills in the last couple of years, putting forth a request to do the greater of those two calculations or to come up with a completely different calculation altogether. That remains to be seen as to whether that will be something that we will be able to capitalize on in the future. However, the calculation exists as it stands today. So I'll talk a little bit more about that too when we get to the numbers. little bit more about that too when we get to the numbers. Uh it is also important to note that with the enrichment aspect of the levy, we had to start participating in a review by O S P I of what goes on to our ballot. And so we have submitted to O S P I what the expenditures would be looking like, generally speaking, and how much money we were going to be asking for. And then they go through it and make sure that they don't have any questions and they've already submitted, excuse me, provided our approval for the levy that we've proposed. So uh that is actually something that is completed. So our Prop One and uh enrichment positions, our enrichment levy is funding nearly five hundred positions for the district and it's a myriad of positions. We're talking about classroom teachers that are in addition to what we have defined by the state. So our bargaining agreement with our, our collective bargaining agreement with the teachers is actually a little richer uh in providing staff to buildings than what the state requires. And so we use levy dollars to help fill that in. Uh additionally, the state doesn't fund us fully. As we've talked about a number of times, we get about sixty-four percent of our funding from the state. We have more teachers than what the state provides for. We pay more per teacher than what the state provides for and so the levy is what's used to help fund those excess activities. Uh librarians, nurses, counselors, parent educators, custodians, there's so many things that we are covering with our levy uh that this is why we have to continue asking for additional resources. To talk about the numbers just a little bit, I'm gonna start with the box on the bottom with the rationale and facts. Uh you're only required to pass the levy by fifty percent plus one vote. Bonds require a sixty percent, but we're not running a bond this time. So both the E P N O and the capital tech levy will both only require fifty percent plus one single vote to push us beyond. There's also no certification requirement. So you don't have to have a certain number of voters show up for a levy uh as you do for a bond. That's a different requirement under bonds. Uh levies are allowed to be on for four years for your enrichment levy, one, two, or four years. Those are your options. Uh we've chosen a four-year cycle. And then uh capital technology levies are actually uh can go up to six years at your discretion, but we have ours in alignment with our E P N O. It works better for us as a district and it's a district choice. Currently, our makeup of the levy is about fourteen percent of our budget. Uh and once I go through the numbers, we can talk a little more about why this changes, but seventeen percent would be what it would be allocated for if we passed the proposition one in February, when we pass proposition one. Right? Sorry. I'm a pessimist at heart, I think. Um only uh, we only can collect what the legislative formula allows for. And that'll be an important component in just a moment. I like the anticipation that I'm building for you. Um our levy laws did increase the authority beginning in twenty twenty-six. So we talked about this uh a couple of times when we had the legislative closeout, legislative session closeout, and I think I mentioned this at the last board meeting, that uh laws did change around levy utilization. We weren't able to capture those increases in the twenty twenty-six year. And so uh what we anticipate doing, which is where I'm gonna get to my exciting point, is uh we're anticipating asking for more than what is actually allowable by what the current law allows. We are choosing to put forth a levy that allows us to collect up to the higher of those two formulas. One, it's an anticipation of what may come in the legislative sessions. Two, it provides us with the ability, if legislative law changes and or assessed values change, we can capture the full amount of what we're capable of. Currently, we are only eligible to collect eighty-two million dollars because that's what our voters approved. That's what we put forward with our voter approval. That's actually less than what we're legally allowed to collect um out in the levy formula. Uh we would have been able to collect around ninety-seven million dollars this year had we been able to forego our twenty twenty-six levy and seek a new one in in this year. It was just too risky for us. We had good reasons and good rationale for it, but it also means that we're unable to access those resources. So um if you'll look at the top of the chart here, what you see is levy based on assessed value calculation. Those are the resources that we're asking for in our levy documents. At this point in time, based on the law, we don't anticipate we'll be able to collect those. What we'll be able to collect is the next line down levy based on per pupil calculation, the lesser of those two. So we're poised to change to the formula of the higher amount if we're, if we're offered that option, but we'll still be only able to collect what is legally allowable up until that point. So we'll be asking the voters for a higher amount and and that's the reason why. And then you can see that the school year impacts down below. Um we all, we receive, our levy allowances are by a calendar year and so that spans two calendar years. And so you have to do a calculation in order to get what the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget will be for it. And then just one side note, that special education is no longer allowed to be charged to the levy. Uh it doesn't mean that we aren't exceeding the allocations that we receive from the state to to fund special education, but what it does mean is that we've had to utilize our basic education dollars in order to cover those costs and shift things out of basic education into our levy to offset those changes.
What was the rationale, you know?
I'd be happy to share that in a non-public meeting.
Okay.
If you want my personal opinion about it.
I think you're doing a great job with your professional opinion. Let's keep going.
And so with that, I'll hand it over to Chad for a little bit.
Yeah, thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate it. Um really excited to speak about this. I mean, the conversation earlier, uh you know, technology is is one powerful tool, but only one tool in the toolbox. Uh but we have the reality that our students are increasingly living and navigating and being taught how to thrive in a digital electronic world. One of the primary ways that we're able to deliver that to our students is through the tech levy, through the capital levy. Um it allows us to run our operations. It allows us to grow and expand in new areas. It allows us to transform um and innovate in new ways and provide students and and meet them where they're going to prepare them for not only academics to sex, success while they're with us, but where they're going next after um they move on to to whatever the world holds for them. Uh much like the prior levy, we fund a variety of positions. Uh all the technology staff and um related services are funded as F T E out of there, as well as some fractional F T E that add up um to some additional positions that round out about ninety-two staff, all said and done. Our one-to-one uh devices, Dr. Garcia mentioned earlier, are all funded through this, as well as all of our staff computers, all the technology in the classrooms, displays, uh audiovisual equipment, et cetera. Um really increasingly important is the electronic security system. So we've had a huge emphasis for years with student uh cybersecurity, data privacy. These things are very paramount, but we're seeing that building security, physical security is becoming increasingly digital. So these systems are now just nodes on our network, just like these laptops, just like these cameras and microphones. So making sure that we support the lifecycle and stay current with that technology is becoming absolutely critical to our physical uh safety initiatives, just as much as our cyber uh and security and privacy. Um we have, of course, maintaining a robust network. We have a very large geographical area here for wired and wireless networks. Um and one thing I really want to point out is the radio infrastructure. Uh that's also part of physical building safety. We have thousands of radios that are managed by the district and issued by the I T department, program-controlled. Um and we have really in the past levies carved out funds for lifecycle support upgrades. We're gonna, we're planning to do that with some of the requests here today. Um we've also done a lot of listening sessions and talked a lot about uh emerging needs, priorities. Uh some of those are aging audiovisual technology in a lot of our spaces um that are inequitable or un or unfunctional. Um what can we do to replace those? Uh standardized classroom charging solutions, that's a big one. As these kids that get a one-to-one device, then they show up and they didn't charge them and the teacher's ready to go with the lesson, but ten, fifteen percent of the kids aren't. So bringing that along, solving that problem, I think, will have a huge impact to the efficacy of these investments we've already made. And then increasingly, we're seeing that our curriculum is becoming digital and online. Uh so a lot of that is starting to roll kind of more to the tech side of things and help augment and push forward curricular aspects, digital textbooks, online materials for students. So there's a lot there. There's a variety of different things. Um there's hundreds and hundreds of software applications academically, administratively. Um but we really maximize the use of those dollars and um couldn't do what we do without the citizen's support and without your support for this proposition. And uh very similar slide to what you saw a moment ago. Um ours is a little more straightforward because we don't have some of the min-max rules that Roslin was just speaking to. Um but prior years, it was a thirty-one million dollar uh levy. I believe if we left the property, uh the formula as is based on property values, it'd be closer to thirty-seven million. We're actually asking for forty-two and a half um to accommodate inflation, to accommodate uh impacts of tariffs, to accommodate some of these new technologies and new things that we want to be able to do that we just didn't have the capacity for as well. Um so I think uh the past, the citizens have been very generous in passing this um since about two thousand, I think was one of the first levies, two thousand and six, somewhere in there. It's been quite a while. Um pass rates are usually very, very well-supported in the sixty percentile range. This also has a fifty-plus one. Um and yeah, like Ross said, we're looking for a four-year, so it runs concurrent with Prop One. And it really is about maintaining and sustaining and growing everything we're doing as it relates to technology for our kids, our families, and our staff. And I think, unless there's any questions, does it go back to you?
Yeah, thanks.
Absolutely.
So I'll talk a little bit more about the tax rates and and what the impacts look like to the individual homeowner. Um I've got my qualification or my my qualifiers with that. There are three components to our tax rates. There's the educational programs and operations levy component. There's the capital technology component. And then there's a bond repayment. So our principal and interest is also something that we submit a tax for on our bonds to have that repayment. So each year, we have principal and interest payments on the bonds that we've issued uh from past voter-approved bond initiatives. The total taxes paid by each homeowner really depends on the value of your individual home. And the value of your individual home can go up or down. Um and the tax rates that are also being applied will go up and down. Uh each year, we make a determination of what the required tax rate is. We set an excess levy for school districts, which means that we collect a dollar amount. We don't collect based on the amount of money per thousand of assessed value, like a a library district or something like that might tax or a city tax might look like. Uh ours is based off of a flat dollar amount. So whatever dollar amount is either the voter-approved amount or the lesser of those two formula calculations, that's the amount that we set to collect and then the tax rate is put in place in order to collect that amount off of whatever the assessed value is in the city. So when assessed values change, tax rates change based on that. Uh the average home in Tacoma in twenty twenty-five, five hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is staggering to me. It's really incredible. Uh but school taxes are only one of the taxes that are assessed each year. There are a number of other taxes that can apply to any individual homeowner based on their city municipality, their county municipality, whatever their, wherever their home is located can have an impact on what those taxes look like. Uh so our intent is to conservatively estimate where we think taxes will be. This is a little small, so my apologies on that, but it's a lot of information. Uh we are looking at the cost impacts on a four-years comparison, the last four years to the next four years. Uh and that's really just looking at last four years of levy to the next four years of levy. So what you can see on the average, if you look at the average assessed home over the last four years, five hundred and eight thousand roughly. Uh the property tax was around eight hundred and seventy-four dollars per home for school district taxes for Prop One and about three hundred and twenty-four dollars per year for Prop Two. Uh and then when you look at the next four years, we're anticipating that the average home will increase to five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three thirty-nine over the next four years and that the tax associated with that property value increase would be thirteen hundred and six dollars for Prop One, which is a four hundred and thirty-two dollar annual increase. And Prop Two would be a hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which is uh, I'm sorry, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is a hundred and thirty-seven dollar annual increase. And so between those two taxes, the monthly increase would be under fifty dollars, forty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Monthly?
Monthly, yeah. Uh and it's important to note that those are based on the current laws, like what we're asking for. If the legislature were to make a change and were allow us to collect the higher of the two, these numbers would look different. So I want to be clear with you that you understand that we're asking for an amount that's higher. The communication that we're working on is based on the law that we know now because I can't really make an estimate on what would happen in the future, other than I've asked for an amount that's based on what that could look like. It's a suppositional amount. These are more realistic. I have factual basis for what I'm putting forth here because I know what these are. And if we look at our tax rate history over years, uh back in two thousand and thirteen, we hit our highest point of seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh that's pre-McLeary. So the the state had shifted quite a bit of the burden over the years onto the taxpayers. We're seeing that trend take effect yet again. Uh you'll notice in twenty nineteen, the big dip. That's when the law, the legislature actually implemented McLeary law. And in that first year of implementation, they limited our levy in half and prevented us from collecting the full value in that year. And then we were able to recover that amount moving forward after that. Uh so beginning in twenty twenty, we saw that restored and we were able to access our levy dollars again. And then what you'll see again in twenty twenty-seven is another little blip where it increases. Uh that is a temporary uh temporary amount where we're going from this lower eighty-two million to this higher number as this, with this new tax being collected. And exacerbating that is the fact that we have a higher debt and uh principal and interest payment in that one year because we've just purchased bonds recently. And so that's just how it all played out. Uh but that then recovers moving forward to the following years. So uh we're anticipating that tax rate over the four years at, do I have it? I don't have all three components on there. Well, I don't have the average. I thought I had an average written down. My apologies. So you know, a little more than four dollars and twenty-five cents on average over the four years. That is what I had for that. And then we'll move on to timeline. So September through December, we're working on finalizing our resolutions. Uh any commentary that we receive from you or within the team, at this point, we'll bring forth the final version on next Thursday, Oc- October twenty-third uh as the final reading for the resolutions. Hopefully you will approve those at that point in time. We're happy to take any feedback or questions, of course, up until that point. Uh like I said, O S P I has reviewed and approved our levy expenditure summary. Uh we've done the first reading. We'll get the second reading. And then once we do have an approval from you, then we will be in an active campaign uh and we will start doing our informational presentation, which Tanisha will talk about next. Uh we have to get our filing done by December twelfth. Uh statements for and against will be announced December sixteenth. Ballots should be in mailboxes around January twenty-third for a February tenth election date. And then the final certification as to whether or not we've passed comes on February twentieth of next year. And with that, I'll hand it over to Tanisha.
All right. So we, the district runs a facts and information campaign. We are not telling people to vote or not voted for it. We are just providing them the information to know what they are voting on and then they will make their own decision. So um we will be standing up a website, um you know, page on our website, uh tacomaschools.org/vote, um where people will be able to find out the information. We'll post all the information there. Um there's a facts and information flyer flyer um that will go out to every um address in Tacoma. Um and um uh then we have Spotlight that will, coming out this fall, that will speak to it. You know, it's it's our, we do it twice a year. Every year, there'll be some information about the levy in that one. Um we are putting together a speakers bureau. We've identified about twenty people throughout the district that will get trained, will be able to deploy out, since our team is pretty small. We need people that we can send out to community meetings, different groups. Um we're, we're compiling a list of all the different places where we need to maybe hit. Um we've neighborhood councils and beyond that. Um and then um so we'll do those presentations and then we'll do the consistent things we've been doing where we remind people that when to vote, how to register to vote, when they should be getting their ballots, um and just keeping that dialogue open to help people know that it's coming. It's pretty straightforward. Um.
No questions for you. Might be for Roslin, probably for Josh. Um what I'm recognizing here is we're putting out a levy. It's going to support a lot of people. I think sometimes when we talk like dollars and cents, that we're like talking about millions of dollars or thousands of dollars, people think about their personal budgets. They're like, that doesn't even make sense. I mean, I've never computed millions. I mean, I've never computed millions before I got here. And so instead of like framing that around, framing it in dollars and cents, framing it around people, I think it's really helpful with the tech levy, that's 92 positions. With the EPO, that is 500 positions. So like when we're considering and spreading this information, I hope that we can highlight and really elevate this is how much it costs to have a high-functioning, high-quality education system, what we're trying to do. And these are the people that we need to do it, and this is how we fund their roles.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I think I also want to just pause because sometimes folks look at that and say, you know, you look at that dollar amount and say, well, 18% of your population is, or budget, and you look at that $117 million and say, well, that's only 500 people. And how much money are all those people making, right? But what's lost in that narrative is this like athletics, arts, music. Those are programs, you know, athletics program is this, you know, a 500, or excuse me, a 5.5 or $6 million budget, right? There's people within that. So it's, it's positions and services, right? It's music, the arts. It's so much more than just that headline of 500 people. So that's that complexity we have to find ways to continue to all talk about in that space with each one of these bullets, partnerships. Well, what does that mean? Well, all of our partnerships, right? There's a lot of contracts in that space and that building operation supports, right? And textbooks and instructional materials. And so it's really difficult, I guess, and I'm trying to find a way to agree with you and add that it's so difficult to just say it's just the one thing. And that's really the challenge Tanisha's team has and that we all have, right? And then this, this speakers bureau, but all of us in the room and Nora is sitting over there going, how do I do this? And she's really good at it, to say that, you know, each time you see one of those stories and saying, this is what the levy does, it's that whole package in that space.
And we have 15 stories, 20 stories that are, well. Yeah, so we are looking at the different things to try to give people a visual of the types of things that the levy does support so that they can see it. Because if you just say athletic or, you know, extracurricular, that, you know, we make up in our mind what that is to us. So we're actually trying to highlight and show people that through a campaign that will go throughout the levy to really help people just see it. And much like what we did with the bond, capital bond campaign, we're like showing people what it means when we build schools, why we build schools. So again, you know, we are only allowed to give out facts. We do not want any PDC violation. So we will be, you know, just telling them the things that they need to know so that they can make a good informed decision.
And that's really important for all of us in the room, right? Is that, and you included as board members, you are subject to PDC violations. And so we are going to have to give some reminders in that space and it's fact base, fact base.
I have a question that someone asked me and I thought I might know the answer, but I didn't. I mean, I'm not sure I do. So when you talk homeowners, so it's not commercial buildings, it's only?
No.
Or is it commercial buildings?
We, it is, yeah. I mean, commercial buildings pay their taxes, too. And I think that we, the assessed value sets our, helps us set our tax rate. The tax rate is then impacted to whoever is eligible to pay it. So, I mean, there's programs where certain individuals don't have to pay taxes. If you have adjudicated property, you may not have to pay a tax. If you are aged and have or low income, you may not pay as much, as much taxes. And so like, you know, you'd have to go to the assessor's website. I'm not sure I can tell you like who pays what and how much and what everybody's impact is.
But my question is, is it just people who are living in the facility or is it also businesses?
It's the person who owns the home or owns the property.
The property, it's a property base.
It is based on the property.
Doesn't have to be a home.
It is based on who owns the property and who is on the tax roll to pay that.
And that's what I was thinking. And then after I said, oh, yes, it's everyone, then I went, is it?
And the, what we try to do is communicate to the voter, this is what on average it costs to them. And so it is not to say that you can take all the voters and say, here's.
Here's your slice.
Yes, in that space. Well, because businesses are also paying taxes which go into that bucket in that space, so.
Just following up on that, I know that this has an impact. And so like for myself, I'm a renter. And so I think, again, as you work on those communications, getting that word out to folks, the city of Tacoma is working on some landlord stuff, that's none of my business, stay in my lane. However, I recognize that my rent goes up every year. And then sometimes when these things happen, like it does impact everyone, everyone who lives in the city. So regardless if you're a homeowner or a renter, if you're in the city limits, living here, we're much different than our landlords who don't live here because my landlord lives in Colorado. So, you know, but either way, it impacts, you know, all residents. But also, I would say a positive impact is to have a better city, one city. We need community in action, right? And so like, what is the city doing? What are the schools doing? What are the parks doing? What are we all doing to make community better? And I think investing in some of these roles in this work could make a better community for all of us. And that's me sitting on my little high horse. I'm going to be quiet now. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming out tonight and educating us.
Appreciate it.
Anytime. Thank you.
For sure. Any additional pieces of information that we, y'all think we need to walk away?
I just remind you that next Thursday, we will bring the, hopefully, the adoption. Unless we hear differently from you as board leadership, we are scheduled to bring the adoption of the both resolutions for your consideration next Thursday's business meeting.
I will be prepared to move however we decide to move on that day. Hearing nothing else, then I hope you guys all enjoy your evening tonight. We appreciate these study sessions require a great deal of preparation sometimes. So shout out to the principals, shout out to you all for being here. It's almost eight o'clock. So it is my encouragement that you get some good rest. It's my hope, sorry, that you get some good rest. Yeah, do what's necessary, take care of yourselves.
Thank you.
For sure. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.